Excellent.
Good evening. I would like to call this evening's board meeting to order if everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to announce that the Board met an executive session prior to this meeting to discuss the Personnel Report, Special Education Agreements, and School Safety and Security. The meeting lasted approximately thirty minutes. And now I would like to make a motion to approve minutes as presented in items three B through three D, which include Board Business Meeting on five twenty-five twenty-three, Finance Committee Meeting six-five twenty-three, and FMT Committee Meeting six-five twenty-three. May I have a second? Sue? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. I would like to make a motion to approve the Finance Reports as presented below in items four B through four M for May twenty-twenty-three. May I have a second? Jamina? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Treasurer's Report. Motion to approve the May twenty-twenty-three Treasurer's Report. May I have a second? Chris? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Is there any public comments on the agenda this evening? Okay, seeing none, I will turn it over to Dr. Christian.
Thank you, Mrs. Petrino. We'd like to welcome our first guest, Dr. Angela King from the Central Monaco Technical High School. If you would come forward, Dr. King. I think we have a few students to recognize from our Skills USA State Competition, our medal winners. Thanks for visiting us this evening.
You're welcome. I want to thank Dr. Christian and the entire Colonial School Board, District School Board, for allowing our students to participate in career and technical education at Central Monaco Technical High School. As we are all responsible for preparing our students for career and college readiness, the students at Central Monaco Technical High School focus on specific career industries that help us prepare them for their career. One of the ways that we do that is by giving our students the opportunity to participate in an organization called Skills USA. Skills USA is a United States Career and Technical Student Organization, serving more than three hundred and ninety-five thousand high school, college, and middle school students and professional members enrolled in training programs in trade, technical, and skilled service occupations. Their motto is preparing for leadership in the world of work. And one of the ways that they do this is allowing our students to earn recognition through Skills USA competitions in local, state, and national career competition programs. All Central Monaco Technical High School students can participate in Skills USA competitions, and this year we had some very outstanding students. There are four levels of competition. The first one is a local competition where our students compete within their programs. And if they win gold or first place, they get to move on to the district competition, which includes all of Monaco Technical Career and Technical Centers, Delaware County Centers, Bucks County Centers, and Chester, Philadelphia County Centers. If they win first place there, they get to go on to the state competition. And then again, first place there, national competition. But you must place first place or gold to go on to the next level. It is my pleasure to introduce two of our outstanding Skills USA winners from Plymouth White Marsh High School and the District USA District Two winner placing third place or bronze medal in Restaurant Service. We have eleventh grade student, Central Monaco Technical High School Culinary Arts student, Anna Karen Senos Alonso. I don't think she's here, but congratulate her. So she placed bronze. We're very, very proud of her. And then we have receiving gold medal first place in the first time only the Cake Decorating Program ever in Pennsylvania is our twelfth grade student, Plymouth White Marsh Central Monaco Technical High School Baking and Pastry Arts student, Carly Picard. You come forward Carly. Oh, it's not over. She actually won gold medal in the district competition and got to go on to the state competition. Yeah, and then in the state competition, she placed bronze. So she placed third in the state. So congratulations Carly. And that is my report. Thank you. There you go Carly. Thank you. Carly. Yes. Oh yes, of course.
Next, we have, we're very proud to discuss and present Ms. Tanya Prickett, our Citadel Heart of Learning Grand Prize Award winner. We're pleased to recognize Tanya, who is a teacher at Colonial Middle School, who was recently awarded the grand prize from the Citadel Heart of Learning Contest. If you watched Fox Twenty-Nine's morning show back on May first, you would have seen that in an elaborate surprise, students, faculty, and staff and Fox Twenty-Nine's Bob Kelly gathered to celebrate and capture the announcement live. It was a great moment. We couldn't have been happier to celebrate with Mrs. Prickett, who was so deserving of this honor. She was selected as a result of twenty-seven nominations sent in on her behalf. In addition to a glass heart-shaped award, she was presented with a five thousand dollar monetary award, and Colonial Middle School also received five thousand dollars as part of the honor. Students who submitted the nominations called Mrs. Prickett's caring nature as a primary reason she deserves the award. Students wrote about her positivity, her ability to make math fun, and the good example she sets for others. One student even indicated they were going to become a math teacher because of her approach in the classroom. "She looked out for all of her students and always wanted us to, always wants us to succeed," said this student. Interestingly, Mrs. Prickett did not start her career as a teacher. She was a chemical engineer, major at Villanova University, and following graduation, was hired to work for Sunoco in Engineering and Finance Departments. While at Sunoco, she earned her MBA. She later left the business world to teach math and chemistry at Kennedy-Kennrick High School in Norristown while pursuing her teaching certificate. She also taught at Mount St. Joseph Academy in Flower Town and was hired in Colonial Middle School in two thousand and five. Tanya's been a master teacher for Colonial School District from two thousand and ten to two thousand and twelve, has been a Blue Team leader at the middle school, sponsored student math competitions, provided tutoring, presented at Best Practice Affairs, and worked on countless building level and district committees. Students and families appreciate Mrs. Prickett because of her compassionate, warm style of teaching, her well-crafted lessons, helps students gain mastery at every level. She often includes brain breaks and active movements, so students rarely become overwhelmed by the classroom tasks. She's always available at the end of the day and before school to assist anyone who might need a little extra help. Colleagues also hold Mrs. Prickett in high esteem. Last year's Citadel Heart of Learning Grand Prize winner, George Hankins, said that Tanya is a great listener and friend. He called her kindness infectious and endearing. We are fortunate to have someone like Mrs. Prickett as a teacher, and we are so proud to be able to recognize her again tonight for her outstanding accomplishment. Tanya, thank you for all that you do to educate our students and make our school district a wonderful place to work and live. Thank you.
Just want to say especially thank you to Dr. Christian for those kind words, for all of you and for inviting me here this evening. I've been with Colonial School District since two thousand and five when Bob Feller brought me into the middle school eighth grade. And your support here in this room, though there are not many, many people here, I want you to know that that is what helps us to do what we do with the students and to try to do that successfully and positively and make really important change for these students, especially over the last few years in their lives and kind of finding their direction. So to all of you that spend your time here, just like we plan lessons and work with students, I just want to say thank you because that inspires me. And to be an employee here in the Colonial School District is one of the best gifts that I ever received. And this award was, if you saw me, out of nowhere, you know, they really fooled me over there. So as I said to the students, this renews my hope in them and in education, but not just for myself and them, but for every teacher and student that's in every room, every day. Over there, I told Citadel that they could have walked into any room. And so that's what helps us to stay inspired, and that gives us hope. So thank you for all you do across this whole district. It's a wonderful place, and we try day by day to make strides. So, thank you.
So the Board knows Citadel has been doing this award in Chester County for many, many years and now has expanded to Delaware, Bucks, Montgomery, and Berks Counties. And in my fourteen years' experience as a superintendent, I have never seen repeat winners from the same school district for the grand prize. Every district has at least somebody recognized, and they're all well-deserved. But to win the grand prize two years in a row from the same district, and even more specifically from Colonial Middle School, speaks volumes about our teaching staff there as well as the number of students and families that nominate teachers. So very well deserved, Tanya, and George won last year, so we're going to go for the hat-trick next year. Item C is Superintendent's Report, Motion to Approve the Personnel Report, Summer Program Appointments and Extracurricular Payments as outlined in Items seven D, seven E, and seven F. Board action is requested for the attached personnel changes, summer program appointments, and extracurricular appointments. Appointments for promotion, employment, or transfer are subject to the presentation of valid credentials, employment verification, documentation, and state mandated requirements.
May I have a second for that motion? Gail? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. And now we'll move on to new business. Chris?
Board Policy Revisions for Second Read. Motion to approve the policies outlined below on a second read basis. Policy one oh one, Mission Statement, Vision Statement, and Shared Values. And Policy two fifty-one, Students Experiencing Homelessness, Foster Care, and Other Educational Instability.
May I have a second? Jamina? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Chris?
Motion to approve the tentative trips and academic athletic competitions. Our PWHS and CMS students will participate in during the twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four school year as presented. These trips are out of state or require an overnight stay.
May I have a second, please? Will? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Will?
Motion to approve rental rates for the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four Before and After School Programs in all elementary schools and twenty-two, twenty-three Summer Camp Program at forty-four dollars and seventy-five cents per day and one hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety-four cents per day respectively.
May I have a second? Rick? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Rick?
Motion to approve bids for art supplies, general school supplies, and paper products for the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
May I have a second? Sue? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Rick?
Motion to approve a one-year contract extension with Elite Revenue Services for the collection of real estate tax bills in Plymouth and White Marsh Townships for the tax year twenty-two-three, twenty-two-four.
May I have a second, please? Sharon? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Will?
Motion to approve a change order for pen builders' construction to extend the base and finished-wearing synthetic surface at CMS track to the fence line in the amount of one hundred thirteen thousand six dollars and sixty cents. The work will begin immediately, and the track is scheduled for completion this summer.
Right, may I have a second, please? Kathy? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Will?
Motion to approve GKO Architects to develop plans for the renovation of Colonial Elementary School with the final budget and design subject to Board approval. Colonial Elementary School's enrollment is anticipated to increase by approximately one hundred and twenty-five to one hundred and fifty students by the fall of twenty-twenty-five. Additionally, the renovations to CES will create separate entrances for the CSD district offices and CES.
May I have a second, please? Chris? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Rick?
The Board of School Directors of the Colonial School District, the district does hereby authorize the administration to work with the financing team composed of PFM Financial Advisors as financial advisor, Saxton and Stump as bond counsel, Raymond James and Associates as underwriter, and the local solicitor in conjunction with the issuance of general obligation bonds, series of twenty-two-three, the amount of fifteen million dollars for the purpose of providing funds for the Colonial Elementary renovation project. Guess that was a motion for that.
May I have a second to that motion? Sue? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
Could we just talk about that a little so the public understands what's, that's a big number? Just make sure we're explaining to people what's happening.
Certainly. As per the previous motion, we are expecting one hundred and twenty-five to one hundred and fifty additional students coming up from our K to three buildings to the four-five school. We currently have about eight hundred and five students in the building, so we're anticipating nine hundred and forty to nine hundred and fifty, as evidenced by the five hundred and thirteen first graders and the four hundred and fifty kindergarteners we currently have. We already have four hundred and forty kindergarteners registered for next year, so we need additional classroom space in this building. And so we are looking at preliminary drawings. We need to get, we spent some extensive time at the last two facility meetings, committee meetings, looking at renovating the space of the offices around the boardroom right here, as well as taking a portion of the very large gymnasium we have to accommodate offices for the district administration, as well as additional classroom space for our teachers and our students. The Board and the committee meetings was emphatic about keeping the district offices on site rather than moving us somewhere else, which is an advantage to having us on site by the high school and by the elementary school and part of the, part of the fabric of our, our school system. And the final plan will be presented to the Board this coming fall for approval so that we can get out the bid in the spring in advance of that first grade coming up. The Board looked at six different options ranging anywhere from about twelve million to over twenty-two million, and our goal is to be in that seventeen to nineteen million range, under twenty million. So that's why the motion was passed tonight that the Board will have final, final say on the budget and the scope of the project. Also for safety and security, while we have great safety measures in place, separating the DO entrance from the school entrance will just improve what we already have as far as our security features, but it won't take away from the things we already have in place.
And also this project will allow for air conditioning of the gym and the auditorium.
Correct.
Right, thank you. Sharon?
Subcontract Agreement for Access Program. So this is a motion to approve the subcontract for the Access Program for the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
May I have a second to that motion? Chris? Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Educational Services, two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three school year, and Summer of two thousand and twenty-three. This is a motion to approve the district-funded prorated tuition of seven thousand four hundred and eighty dollars for one student to attend future to attend Fusion Academy for the 2022-23 school year and the summer session in the amount of $8,400.
May I have a second? Jamina, any questions or comments? All in favor? Sharon?
This is a motion for educational services, again, for 23-24 school year. A motion to approve the educational services for the 2023-24 school year as outlined below. The Vanguard School, tuition for six students at $42,250 per student. ESY tuition for three students at $7,800 per student. ESY tuition and one-to-one services for two students at $10,600 per student. Also, George Cruthers Memorial School, ESY services for one student with a rate of $1,017 for intensive support, and $6,771, which includes speech, occupational, and physical therapy services. Also HMS School, ESY tuition for one student at $16,065. Also Melmark School, intensive staffing cost education for one student at $192 per diem. Residential charges for one student at $320 per diem on school days, and $512 per diem on non-school days. ESY tuition for one student at $522 per diem for education, and $546 per diem for residential. Also Building Blocks Behavioral Services, BCBA services at $95 per hour. RBT and ABA therapists at $35 per hour. And finally, Pathway School, ESY tuition for one student at $8,300.
May I have a second to that motion? Gail, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
This is a placement agreement in lieu of FAP. Motion to approve release and placement agreements in lieu of FAP for the as presented. Due to student confidentiality, these agreements were discussed in executive session. So it's one student to attend AIM Academy in the amount of $43,200 for the 23-24 school year. One student to attend Woodland School until graduation or through August 31st, 2026, whichever comes first.
May I have a second? Chris, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
The MCIU Special Education Cost Plan for 23-24. This is a motion to approve the Colonial School District's cost plan, which includes services purchased through the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit. The proposed preliminary costs for the 23-24 school year is $1,179,116.
May I have a second? Kathy, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
Contracted services agreement with Lincoln Center. This is a motion to approve the services agreement renewal for the Lincoln Center to provide three community counselors, one at CMS and two at PW High School, for the 23-24 school year in the amount of $249,000.
May I have a second? Rick, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
And finally, MCIU-VHS Consortium Participation Contract. This is a motion to approve the contract with MCIU to provide VHS program services for the 23-24 school year.
May I have a second? Chris, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Sue?
This is a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Board of School Directors of the Colonial School District and the Colonial Education Association regarding prescription plan modifications, premium share modifications, waiver, opt-out modifications, and plan year modifications as presented.
May I have a second? Gail, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
This is a motion to approve the agreement with General Healthcare Resources, Inc., to provide substitute nursing services effective July 1st, 2023, as presented.
May I have a second? Sharon, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Will?
This is a motion to approve the administration's recommendation to scrap van 24 due to complete engine failure. It's a 2011 GMC, I don't know if you need me to read all this stuff, but it's a nine-passenger van, and it's pretty old.
May I have a second to that motion? Sue?
I have a question.
Any questions or comments?
Is it, did, no. But did we look in at all to the tech school and their program if they would like the van before we scrap it altogether?
I can check, but I can assure, I can assure, I'm sorry, Dr. Christian, with that vehicle...
I saw it.
Yeah, they did not want that vehicle.
I know less about cars than anybody in this room. We are not giving it to anyone.
The junkyard turned us down. No, no.
Mr. Lally and his team got the most utility out of that vehicle possible.
Good thought. All in favor? Thank you. Sue?
This is a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between Colonial School District and the Colonial Education Association regarding teacher on special assignment as presented.
May I have a second? Rick, any questions or comments? All in favor? Great, thank you. Solicitors' report.
I have no report.
Great, thank you. Chris, Community Relations?
No report for CRSL Safety and Models.
Sharon, Curriculum?
No report for curriculum.
Will, Facilities?
I do not have a report.
Thank you. Rick, Finance?
Finance Committee met on Monday, June 5th. The committee reviewed the 22-23 budget year-to-date update, potential financing options for the CES renovations, and the creation of Fund 37 for managing the project.
Thank you. Sue, HR?
No report.
Central Monaco Technical High School. Chris?
Just wanted to mention that at the tech school graduation, students, graduating seniors, received $175,000 worth of scholarships and equipment from three different sources, from the CMTHS Foundation, the Regina Foundation, and several business partners. But that's quite a feat, that amount of money in scholarships for those kids. So, just wanted to highlight that.
And I'd also just like to congratulate all those students that graduated from there, I believe it was last week. It was a great ceremony.
Sharon? IU?
Really happy to announce that the IU Office of Professional Learning received an environmental grant, about $30,000. It's going to be used for the creation of an environmental mobile lab, so look for the lab to be coming to a school near us soon.
Awesome, it's great. Rick, anything for legislative?
No report.
Thank you. Any municipal or community reports?
Just add for Conshohocken, the fireworks on July 3rd, the rain date is July 8th, and the soapbox derby will take place on Fayette Street on 4th of July.
And Foundation, Gail?
No report.
Okay. Attached to the agenda tonight is technology reports, curriculum report, school activity accounts, athletic activity accounts, and then closing items. Is there any public comment on anything this evening? Okay, seeing none. I know I would just like to, this is our last board meeting before graduation this week, I just want to thank all of our administrators, all of our teachers, all of our support staff, everyone that has worked so hard this school year. It was a great year. And just to wish all of our students and families a great summer, happy graduation to our seniors. We're really looking forward to their ceremony on Wednesday night.
And I just want to add a thank you to the facilities team for all of the work with the respective schools' ceremonies and the upcoming PW graduation. Hopefully it won't rain, you won't have to wipe down all those seats, but just want to say a big shout-out thanks in advance for all they do.
Anything else? All right, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.